I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, roll call. Councilman Reeves is not able to be present here tonight, but all other council members are present and we have a forum, so we'll proceed with business. First up is the approval of the agenda. Does any council member have any questions on the agenda or any modifications to it?
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Do we have any citizens comments tonight? Hello, Julie.
Hello, council. Julie Lyon, I office at 320 South Main in Greensburg, Suite 200. Uh, just was gonna give you a little update. I haven't been the Director of Economic Development since January, but I figured I could give you a Director's Report. Um, uh, we, I should say thank you because I just went and deposited our final reimbursement check for the grant process of getting this triplex built. Um, the, the $20,000 that you provided, holy smokes, was very helpful because like, it didn't always work like they sent us money when they were supposed to. And so, we kinda had to bridge some things, which was stressful at times, but nonetheless successful. So, um, we will be, uh, moving, uh, our first daycare into the triplex the weekend of the 26th. So, um, and they should be licensed and operable, um, the 1st of October. We're working with state licensing on transferring license and all of that stuff. Um, some additional items, I don't remember if I told you about the Zones Grant, but we were awarded the Zones Grant. Um, so today, in that first year of Zones funding, we really wanted to push money out to the actual providers. Um, so we did retention bonuses, um, mostly for those, they had to fill out an application, so we had to contract, you know, how many years of service they put in, how many kids they have, full-time employees, part-time employees, all that stuff. So, um, I actually got to go and deliver, uh, $5,000 bonus checks to four out of the five daycares here in the county, and, um, we will be providing $16,000 of bonus funding for the employees at the hospital. So, just a, a thank you, which ties into, you know, we need them, not just for childcare services, but also for, um, how to guide what our next steps are and how we use the next year's funding. Um, that is spread across five counties. It cannot be used for construction, but it is gonna cover like furniture at the triplex and, um, possibly like landscaping to make it look pretty. Um, things like that. The other thing, and it's not public, so I won't say where, but, um, I've been notified and, um, have received grant funding to put in storm shelters at the triplex. So, I know that as we were building, that was one of the things that people kept asking. Um, so I prioritized it, wrote a grant, and was awarded some funding for that. So, uh, we will be working on that. And then, on the 24th of September, we will be meeting, um, Cairo County Economic Development along with, um, Cairo County United. Sorry, I could, yeah. So, KCU and KCED will be meeting to discuss the transition of ownership and make sure that everybody's on the same page. The whole purpose of building this triplex to be used for childcare is to maintain affordable and sustainable childcare, so we wanna make sure that they understand our priorities and while they own and operate it, they can do that, but with the understanding of, here's kind of the ground rules. So, um, I've also been able to, uh, bring money both into the city of Greensburg and into the city of Mollville as far as storage. I guess there's other county stuff that probably doesn't pertain to you as much, but we will be looking to, um, hire somebody to work, uh, with Cairo County Economic Development that is focused and, um, has strengths in business similar to Chamber, but I think there's businesses that need help, um, and connecting resources to, um, those that need help. So, uh, we will be looking to recruit, so there will be a job posting going out after the 24th for that. So, if you know anybody that would be good for that, we'd like to add them to our team and, uh, which is kind of evolving. So, the longer I'm here, the more big things we get, the better I get at managing them, and the more we do good at that, the more they want to fund us. And so, um, I'm really working regionally, but, uh, I say I'm building an empire out of the office over here. So, um, we'll be adding some part-time staff and, uh, maybe a part-time or full-time business development person. So, um, exciting things still. Like, I don't want people to think that it's just, we built something and now we're done. You know, there's other work being done, um, behind the scenes. So, any questions?
You're not the Director anymore, but you're still, are you a member of the ECODEV or what's your role?
Yes. I've been the project coordinator, um, since January and, and do hold a contract with Cairo County Economic Development.
And then you said, I don't know how you phrase it, are we transferring another daycare into this space or is this an additional daycare that's coming to our community?
So, initially, this is a transfer. So, um, Finn's Friends is moving from the Peace Lutheran Church into the daycare. Uh, because of taxation, we have to be out of that church or the church will be, uh, will have to pay property taxes next year. So, we knew going in that that would have an expiration date. We're not gonna push that expiration date. So, um, we gave them over 45 days' notice for our contract with them and, um, will be out by the end of September. So, everybody's known, that's always been kind of the plan. Um, I do have other people that are interested in starting new daycares, but I did not want to fill an empty building that we were gonna turn around and give to somebody without their knowledge and say, oh, hey, by the way, we locked you into a lease. You know, I didn't think that that was fair. So, um, and that's some of the stuff that we'll be talking about on the 24th and they know that the one daycare is moving in there and things like that.
Other questions for Julie?
Thank you.
Thanks for the updates, Julie. Julie? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda that includes the minutes of our September 2nd meeting as well as appropriation of its 1,300.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to our new items of business. Uh, first up is review of the city's various fees that we assess.
This was tabled from the last meeting and was discussed at the meeting before that. So, I've included our current fee schedule in the packet for your review and then just a few statistics of, um, our license and permit revenues over the last several years and how many building permits were issued over the last four years. So, you'll see that in my memo. Um, I will note that those revenues for licenses and permits include all of our various types of licenses and permits. So, everything from temporary vendors, pet registration, um, special purpose vehicles formerly, um, all of those things go into that fund. So, you'll see those, those revenues reflected. It's not huge, but it is something that, um, does go into our general fund. So, from a budgetary standpoint, it is something that, um, we do take into account projectives' revenues for us every year, um, in the budget process. Um, just looking through the fee schedule, most of them, to start out with, the utility fees are really, uh, cost-based on what it costs us for water meters and sewer hookups, street cuts, all of those things. So, um, barely breaking even on that. That's really just the cost of, of those supplies and to do that work. Um, then as far as the rest of it, most of it are permit fees for various types of construction, whether it's building a full house or commercial building to smaller accessory structures or sign permits, things like that. Um, you'll, you will see I added the wind and solar system, parallel generation that we discussed a couple meetings ago on there. Um, and then it lists also the inspections and then also contractor licensing. Um, for any contractor doing work here in the city, they need to be registered with the city and you'll see what that registration is there. And that list is available on our website. I didn't include it in the packet, but it is on the website and we have 30, 25 or 30 probably that register on an annual basis, um, to do work in the city. And I would say, most of them, um, quite a few of them renewals that do work here regularly. There, we do get new ones here and there, but generally they're ones that register every year that do work here in the city. And for them, that's something that's, they experience pretty standard town-to-town that has a permitting process. So, um, that's kind of an overview of our fee schedule and I'll take any questions you might have.
With a couple meetings ago, we changed our traffic deal to the standard.
Right.
Is that what the SPVs are, special purpose vehicles?
Yes.
So, that go, that comes off here anyway?
That goes away. So, but formerly, in these numbers I gave you, that's also tucked in there.
Right.
Um, and then the temporary vendors, like food trucks that come in, that's where that goes as well.
And the pet registration that we do, yearly pays for tags and things like that. Also identifies whose animal is whose and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
To me, it's just a, it's a checks and balances with the city to kind of have these fee, these permit fees and things. I just do leave it alone.
I think the vast majority, as Stacy said, are pretty much just there to cover costs for us. The, you know, water meter hookup fee, that's what it costs us.
That's exactly right.
A water meter. Or same thing for, uh, a street cut, something like that. So, uh, I think in that, you know, we're not making money off of it, but we're not losing money.
Well, and that's just it. We're not doing it to make money.
Yeah.
You know? So, why get rid of it? Um, I should be leaving it alone.
Yeah, as I look through them, I see a lot of things that, uh, that make a lot of sense and it does cover costs and the residents can say, okay, you had to cut this. You gotta send somebody out to do a street cut or you had to install a water meter or whatever, and that all makes sense. I think the ones that, when people have talked to me that they get hung up on is like, well, I want a swimming pool and I have to pay $35 a year to register my swimming pool and...
No, they don't.
No.
Because it's classified as an accessory.
These are not annual fees. They're one-time on construction.
Right, but if I take my pool down every year and put it back out?
No. There's not permits for above ground, just in-ground. There's no permit for...
There's no permit for an above-ground pool?
No.
Okay.
No.
It's a permitted structure.
Correct.
Like, they built it to be a permanent, but no.
There are some requirements for certain depth of water period, so most, they need a fence around them, but, um, that could also be...
But they need a permit for the fence, right?
But it would be one-time on construction.
Sure.
Right.
But it's not an annual.
Correct. Not an annual fee. And, and for a, a pool that comes up and down, there's no permit for that. It would only be for, if it's a permanent structure. And that's for all of these things, aside from temporary signs. Everything else, these are for permanent structures.
I agree with Mark. I think we just leave it alone. It's, it's too excessive and kind of checks and balances with, with people in here to talk with people if there's other questions they may have or otherwise they wouldn't be stopping it for.
Well, I think that's maybe one of the ancillary benefits of having, say, a fee, permit fee for a fence is that also gives the property owner an opportunity to make sure that they're aware of our rules and regulations as far as how, how tall can it be, how close to the street can it be?
Easements?
Yeah.
Vents.
Just to make sure it's complying with our, you know, you know, safety concerns so that the fence isn't causing the view obstruction.
Which side you put the pickets on?
And that was one of the questions I had.
Build the table with fence. I mean, that's what we would tell people.
If, if we do away with this, does that just kind of open things up for people to do whatever they kind of want?
But we could have a permitting process that doesn't have a fee associated with it, could we not?
We could.
And I'm not proposing that we do that, especially now with better understanding that like, my opinion was if we're doing these things for the sake of safety, let's not put any barrier to somebody come in and report to the city, hey, I've got a swimming pool. Hey, I'm gonna do this thing that could be a potential safety risk when they're trying to right or wrong, try to save some money, but it's immaterial to the city.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I guess when I was originally approaching this, I was like, well, it's non-material and if it gets better compliance, then let's get rid of it so that we can have better compliance because you don't have to have a fee for, for permitting process.
I would say where we see non-compliance and really for, we don't track that because you don't know until we see something pop up or somebody says something, my neighbor, or did you see this over there? Um, I would say non-compliance really is more about lack of knowledge or understanding that we even have a process as opposed to there being a fee associated with. And I would say that most contractors doing work, you know, they're the ones coming in to pull the permit. So, they generally have an understanding because it's, you know, most cities they do work in have that process. So, um, and then they tuck that into their cost to whoever they're doing the work for. Um, and it does cover some of our costs because we do have some staff time in that, you know, Christie, uh, going over the project with people. Sometimes, it can be multiple visits and several hours, depending on the project. If it's a commercial project, um, we might need to bring in some outside consulting, um, for that. And so, there would be some more costs associated with that for a commercial job and then inspections. Um, so some, you know, for most things, you know, a fence, it's pretty easy. Uh, but there is some staff time in that and then, um, you know, for construction projects, there's some, some inspections that happen throughout and things like that. So, there is some staff time that this does help to offset a little bit.
I've gotta think, the vast majority of our fees are tens of dollars.
Yes.
And they're covering projects that will be many thousands of dollars.
On line.
That's not gonna, you know, that fee is probably, it's not drop of the bucket or not even a drop of the bucket to the total cost of what might be going on. So, I don't see that being a deterrent.
Did, I can't remember when this was first brought up. Did, did you check with some other towns our size to see?
I did not.
Or my thinking of something else?
Um, I, I did not, but...
To see what they did.
Yeah. I would say cities who were zoned, who, who do a building permit process would have fees of some kind.
Most of those building fees haven't changed since 2007 or '08, whenever that was finalized. Some of them were, this didn't establish prior to the tornado, but really right after they, they established some fees. And I know the council at the time discussed and haggled over some of them and, and adjusted, but they haven't raised since that time. So, I think, some, some will do flat fees, some will do a progressive like we do on some of ours. Um, but I, I, I would guess in, in a larger majority of cities that have a permit fee structure were right there or lower than what most of them are, just from things I've seen on the list there.
Well, Mark and Haley have indicated kind of happy with our fee schedule where it's at. Nathan?
I don't, I don't see an issue with it. Um, you know, we're talking about the material ones are to break even and then, like she said, they haven't probably been updated since 2007-ish. I was saying, or thinking material-wise, we're probably not breaking even nowadays, you know?
With the cost of things going up, yeah. We're staying here and everything is...
And I know you can't cut a street and fill it in for 350 bucks.
We did...
Even if it's a core hole. I mean, it costs a lot of money.
The other update was in 2023, we did update the water line, the two water fees. Because the meters, we were not covering our costs at all there.
I think they're in line with everything else I've seen in other cities.
Kind of sounds like a consensus that don't see a need to change the fee schedule as is?
Yep, leave it alone.
Any other discussion or observations?
No, I think it's just good to communicate to the taxpayer, one. Some of the fees are put in places where there's not a burden on the taxpayer because somebody decides to build some massive complex. It's to keep the city workers safe. It's to keep residents safe and it's not meant to be an HOA because somebody doesn't like the way something looks. And I think that there's some things specific in the code that feels HOA of like, we don't like the way this looks. I think the city council maybe could ruin that, but as far as the fees go...
Right.
It's not, and, and it's the city, we need to recognize when somebody builds something, that's not tax revenue that we need to ruin because of it. We want to encourage in every way possible that people will have it. So, it's a win-win. We're here to work for the taxpayer and not just trying to counter it by.
Yeah, and I think these discussions are always good to have periodically on a variety of topics. It's always good to ask these questions and review it from time to time.
Any other discussion?
Okay, hearing none. We will move on to our next item of business and just an annual housekeeping item. And that's to review the engagement letter for Kennedy McKee for accounting services for the next year.
You'll actually see two letters included for your consideration. Um, you may remember when Jim Kennedy was here last time to present our audit, he announced he would be retiring at the end of the year, so you'll see a different name signing those letters. Um, I would assume he will be, um, the one handling our account. But they have presented, um, two different choices for agreements. One is a one-year agreement, which we've had pretty standard for years. Um, the second is a three-year agreement, um, to cover '25, '26, and '27 um, with small incremental increases in the fees. Um, the fee for a one-year agreement is $17,000, not to exceed 17,000. Um, and I meant to include what, um, the last one was. I think we were at $16,800 for this year's services, if I remember correct. Um, so every year, we've seen just an incremental increase. Um, but again, that's not to exceed, so it kind of depends on their staff time that they end up spending. Um, and then you'll see an incremental increase of $250 with the three-year agreement. So, these are both presented for, uh, your consideration. I think either way we go is fine. It's really just whether you'd prefer to do one at a time or lock in for three years.
Well, Kennedy McKee's been doing this for how many years for the city?
Very long time.
At least since the tornado.
I think...
At least since the tornado.
I'm sure. It wasn't even before the tornado when I was on the council at that time.
Yeah.
So, with, with the experience we've had with them and, and they've done us a heck of a job, I wouldn't have any problem with doing a three-year deal with them.
Yeah, and the cost increases seem to be aligned with what we'd be doing year to year anyway. So, yeah, I'm perfectly fine continuing Kennedy McKee for one or three years for the council to do.
Wow, I think three years is a bargain. If you do the math, just the first year, that's only 1.4, almost a 1.5% increase, that's significantly lower than the whole experience inflation. So, if we've not had any issues, it depends if we do three years, if Stacey's comfortable with working with them still.
Yeah.
That increase could have been a lot worse.
Yeah.
I'm amazed at just 250 bucks a year.
Yeah.
Just wait, health insurance time's coming.
Well, it sounds like there's a consensus. Do we have a motion to approve either the one or three-year engagement letter with Kennedy McKee?
I'd move for three years.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the three-year agreement with Kennedy McKee for accounting services for the city for the next three years. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, uh, next up, we have a resolution 2025-07 uh, that will adjust the city's Kansas Open Records Act fees that we assess.
Earlier this year, the legislature amended the Kansas Open Records Act in House Bill 2134 and those changes took place on July 1st. Um, two pieces of guidance has been issued by the Attorney General's Office regarding this, um, for public bodies that we can no longer assess, um, a per-page, per-copy fee, that it needs to be tied to actual costs. So, you know, we calculate how much a sheet of paper costs, how much a individual copy on our machine costs and, um, then a flat dollar amount per hour for an employee. So, in this resolution, it makes a change to charge actual staff time and actual cost of materials for open records requests that we would fill. So, um, there's not specific amount, amounts named. So, depending on the records request, and, and we rarely get them, generally, we can fill them digitally by email. We have not had any large ones that require a lot of copying or time. Um, but depending on staff that would be required to fill a request, you know, whether it was at the city clerk level or my level or city attorney level, those fees would vary. So, this change would allow us to be flexible to bill for whatever that staff time would be reflected in filling that request. And then we would be able to break down what a, the cost of a sheet of paper is by what we purchase. And we know on our copier what a per-copy charge we get is, you know, every month. So, we'd be able to break down those actual costs to invoice someone. So, this resolution really would be evergreen. It doesn't list any sorts of amounts. It's just flexible that we could bill accordingly to actual staff time and cost of supplies.
Council, any questions on the proposed resolution?
Gets us in compliance with state statute.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-07.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2025-07, adjusting our open record, records fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution approved. All right, moving on. Next item of business is to consider the purchase of a new mower.
Or two.
Or two.
Um, included in the packet are some quotes for your consideration that Danny worked together. We currently have four mowers, three grasshoppers and one country clipper. They are all 72-inch decks. Um, two of these mowers, one has 1,900 hours, one has 1,600 hours, and they get pretty heavy use. Um, some of the lots we've been mowing, um, for weed notices, things like that, they get pretty high before we go cut them. So, some of it's not easy mowing. Um, so you'll see those quotes listed in there. Uh, Danny would like to recommend that we purchase two to be able to, uh, have a smaller one with 61-inch deck and a 72 as well. Um, we have more employees. We can knock out more mowing quicker if we have a couple more mowers. And we've had instances over a couple weeks ago, the last couple of weeks, where we had multiple mowers down all at the same time. So, uh, he was working on those repairs. Um, but it's always be nice that if we had a couple others in the rotation. Um, the grasshoppers are recommended since that's already what most of our mower fleet is and we already have some parts on hand and they're interchangeable across there. So, we can keep some parts on hand that will work, so we're not having to order things when stuff breaks down. Uh, we do have a equipment reserve fund cash balance of $175,000. So, we do have, um, ample funds to make this purchase. Um, the two mowers that are recommended are the Model 335. Um, the top two on the spreadsheet, one for $13,542 and the other one for $13,256 with a total of $26,799.32.
Is any of the new useful discount on this?
Um, I think you'll see on the quote, there were some discounts, uh, listed on the quote.
I didn't know. I thought there was something we purchased through the, being a municipality, we would get a little bit of a price break.
I was gonna say, I mentioned to Stacy, I don't know, maybe a week or so ago. It's been a lot of rain this year and I don't know if I've driven by a park at a single time this season where I thought, gosh, the grass is high or this is getting out of control and it sure wouldn't take long. But this wet year, we've just done to have gotten out of control and I appreciate the work they're doing. So, if they say... I've appreciated the work they do, and so if they save more awesome mowers, I say we give them something ours, especially if we have equipment that's our own.
In clarification, these would be additional mowers? Are we going to be looking to get rid of a couple or are we just adding?
No, they're in addition. I don't think we're to retirement yet of any of them.
I probably got eighteen hundred hours on them just this year, didn't I?
Yeah, I don't know the years we purchased some of these. I know one of them.
Mike was still here when we purchased one of the last.
One of the last grasshoppers, but the rest of them, we've had a while.
Counsel, any further discussion? Or motion to approve a purchase?
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the two long mowers presented.
So yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommended purchase of two mowers, the grasshopper model three-three-fives, for a grand total of twenty-six thousand seven ninety-nine thirty-two. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, one last item of business tonight, and that is just our annual financial report for the swimming pool operations this summer.
That's included for your review, and it includes a ten-year look back to twenty-fifteen when the pool first opened. It's crazy to say that it's been ten years since we opened the pool. So I would say this year was not the best. We lost more than usual, but it's due to several factors. Expenditures were up due to several things. We had a pump leak that we had to repair. We purchased a new refrigerator when the one we had died. We had a pretty costly repair to the ice maker late in the season. And then some, the cost of concession items was up on some of the things and a little increase on the wages expense. And on the revenue side, it was pretty in line with previous years. We will have a little more revenue coming in. We're selling off some of the remaining concession stand items. So we'll have a little more revenue that will come in there. And we did have some closures due to weather, you know, it really was a mild summer. And we had quite a few closures, especially towards the end. Two of the three weekends at the end, we were closed. So as far as our concession sales there, we had quite a bit of stuff left over that we had stocked up thinking we were going to be open for three more weekends. So, you know, not a great summer. The pool, as I give this report every year, pools are not moneymakers. They're really something for our community that's taxpayer-supported and also user fee-supported. And we have been really blessed that the county shares in that cost every year for a very long time, contributes ten thousand dollars towards our operation every year. So we are glad for that health as well. So. Not an awesome report, but other than that, operationally, we had a good season. Things went well, kids were happy. So that part was good.
Counsel, any questions on the swimming pool financial report? Well, hearing none, we are now done with items of business tonight, so we'll move on to city staff reports. Stacy?
Here, the first item is a report on the tax sale last Wednesday. I, Christie and I went, and there were not a lot of people in attendance for the tax sale. As we previously discussed and you approved for me to purchase any properties that I deemed would be good investments for the city if there were no other bidders. And I purchased eight properties that you'll see listed in your packet with pictures. There were no other bidders. Each of them were purchased for five dollars a piece plus the filing fee for the filing of the deed, which cost more than that, thirty-two, I think it was, thirty-eight dollars. So total three hundred and forty-four dollars was spent to purchase these eight properties. The one of note will be eight-eleven South Grove, which has a house on it. So we have a house, or we will. Currently, it has a federal lien on it through the Small Business Administration, and I'm working with Clayton. We've been having some conversations about that. At the time of the sale, the sheriff did let everyone know that was interested in that property, that lien did exist. And SBA has a right for the next year to redeem that lien, which means that they could come and purchase back the property from us. So the deed as of the sale could not be filed to the city yet, but Clayton and I are having some conversations about that and how we can move forward, so stay tuned. Your next question is, what are we going to do with the house? So we have some time while we're working through some of those legal issues with the property, getting it into our ownership. The city crew's already been over there that day. They went to all eight properties and mowed them very well, trimmed them. In the seven that are vacant lots, put the land bank signs in them to list them for sale. Those, I've updated the land bank map and it's on our website, updated with those vacant properties. They did go over to that house and mowed and trimmed. And we'd like to do some more of a cleanup, but until we get that ownership part figured out, we don't want to do too much yet. So it is cleaned up and it's looking better than it was. So I'll just, that's the only update at this time I have about it, but it was one of those things that's hard not to bid on because otherwise it would have just remained in limbo, unsold. So I think we have some opportunity with that. So we'll have further discussion. And if you want to come in and visit with me anytime about it, absolutely, please come do so. Next week, Mick and Justin and I will be attending the KPP Annual Conference in Wichita. KPP puts this on every year for their members, and there'll be about a hundred people from all across the KPP membership that will be there. They have different speakers that come in and do presentations on a variety of topics, so we'll be attending that. This Friday at nine forty-five at the Big Well Museum, the Time Capsule that I believe I mentioned at the last meeting will be opened, and I hope that you'll all be able to make it, to be there for that. Should be interesting to see what's in there, and then there's also been some conversations of what to put back in there to do a new Time Capsule. So if you have any great ideas or items that you think would be worthy of including, please let Heather or myself know, and I'm sure that there'll be opportunity for that in the future. And then all day Saturday in Davis Park is Founder's Day events, and I have attached the flyer and event schedule for that. So there's a bunch of things going on throughout the day there. And then I mentioned at the last meeting that CBS News was interested in coming out, and they are confirmed to be here Friday. They will be at the Time Capsule opening on Friday and then doing some interviews with some folks in town, doing a follow-up from the last time they were here in two thousand and eight. And this will air sometime on their evening news, but they're excited to come out and do a follow-up story on the community. That's my report, and Chief Dennis's report was included in your packet if you have any questions for him.
Questions for Stacy?
I have, I have one. It's not pertaining to any of this. A week or so ago, I had a lady ask me on our sidewalk project. She was from Works at Upland. And she seemed that we're going to start in twenty-six. If they could be put on the list either at the end, so that their place of business is not tore up in the middle of their peak period.
Yes, and the school.
I told her I said I didn't know why not, but I'd find out.
Yeah, there and the school both, we want to be cognizant of activities there, so we don't disrupt.
Although, no, I think.
Yeah.
Not really a question, but I guess just a comment on the tax sale of my big properties. I'm kind of excited, and I honestly, at the end of the day, I think it's a great thing because, I mean, all of those properties were mowing anyway, and the cost of sending a certified letter to mow it is going to be more than the five dollars. Let's just say it's a bad headache.
And the mowing fee is more than what all of them cost.
Yeah, and.
We don't get paid back for that.
And that's, the house that we purchased, again, may not be in the best condition, but is a three-bedroom, two-bath on a whole basement. So market value, I would assume, is more than five dollars.
Why not? Would you say small business doesn't come back and redeem it? Sell it as is. I mean, we're not in the housing business, but we could.
Yeah, I don't think we want to get into the rental business, but I think we'll sell it, but maybe some conversation of how much work we want to do to it, because I think there's some things that might make the resale.
We need to get our five bucks back at least.
Oh, yeah.
I think you've alerted and required the mayor to listen.
If it's not a law to move for me, it's just a block away from mine. But no, yeah, that's conversations. We've got plenty of time before we really can do anything with the property, but I'm excited to have, just for the vacant plots, additional stock for maybe potential future development. And that house is a new thing for us, but, you know, have some conversations over the next year. You know, would there be a return on investment for us if we were to put some work into fixing it up? Or do we just sell it as is and get what we can out of it? Conversations for the next year.
Another property I'll call out is the commercial property along the highway that we did get next to the Family Dollar. So I think that's a real great location for a potential business. If you hear somebody that is interested in putting something in and looking for highway frontage, I think that's a really nice spot there that we did get as well.
Any other questions for Stacy on her report? Hearing none, we'll move on to governing body comments. Do we have any of those today? Hearing none, we do have one executive session scheduled tonight related to the discussion on the acquisition of real estate.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session for discussion prior to acquisition of real estate till six fifty.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?